Stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the December 9th County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly in the white folder that you may review if you're interested. And if you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row and he would help you with that.
Routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda amending it to defer item 23 till next week.
I have a motion to defer item number 23 for one week. Is there--
Second, Benega.
I have a second for Benega. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed same. Sorry, roll call vote.
Sorry.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Peckus?
Aye.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Hieburger?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Now a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
A motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peckus?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hieburger?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of December 2nd, 2014.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move the minutes.
A motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections? Roll call vote.
Kelly?
Yes.
Peckus?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Hieburger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, five to zero.
Item three, your bills to be paid in the amount of $820,517.
Pay the bills.
A motion. Do we have a second on the bills?
Second on the bills.
Any comments, questions? Okay. Roll call vote.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peckus?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hieburger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Item four, reports. The Minnehaha County Sheriff's report for November 2014 has been received and is placed-- excuse me-- on file in the auditor's office. Item five are personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel action.
Is there a motion for routine action?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
A motion and a second on routine action. Are there any questions for Kerry? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peckus?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hieburger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Item B is special commission action to consider a rate of pay increase for Fred-- I don't know how to pronounce his last name--
Kinchke.
Highway department mechanic from 14-5 to 14-8.
Good morning. You may recall that during our most recent compensation study, we identified a few positions with some market issues. As time goes on, this is additional position that's come to light. We've been recruiting for the mechanic position that we have vacant for over a year now, have extended multiple offers, and for one reason or another, they're falling through. It's been clear based on some data that I've gathered that we have a serious market issue with this position. In fact, our wages are significantly behind where they would need to be to attract qualified candidates for the job. While our base rate is close, it's clear that most people with a few years of experience are making $25 to $28 an hour even for these positions. We're asking for your approval, and this is a rare circumstance, but we're asking for your approval to move Fred's salary up by three steps because of those market issues that we're facing for that job that will hopefully allow us to recruit in a candidate at a higher rate of pay. In fact, for the first time, we're hoping to use the authorization you gave us to advertise that position with a higher base range just because we are not able to recruit. DJ is here to elaborate or to answer any questions as well, but that is, in essence, the problem that we're facing and the reason for the request.
Okay. Are there any questions for Kerry or DJ? Seeing none, I would look for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments?
My kingdom for a mechanic.
Yeah. Roll call vote.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peckus?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hieburger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Item C is consider a motion to authorize the chairman to sign administrative services agreement with Sanford Health Plan.
This is the third administrative agreement you've seen within the last, I don't know, approximately six weeks. We'll have one more still coming forward that won't be ready until January. But of course, this entity is one of the components of our self-insured health insurance plan. Each few years, we look at signing the contract for the administrative services. There's an error in the memo. We're looking at a 1.7% increase for the next three years, and that's a total percent increase, not a yearly increase, so very competitive rates for the per employee per month administrative fees. The increase for customer service, or rather, for the case management and utilization management is higher. Overall, it's averaging about 5%, but again, I'd want to stress that this is the total increase of the contract, even though it's for a three-year contract. So I'm asking for your approval today to sign that contract with Sanford to continue the fantastic arrangement that we have with them.
Any questions? Look for motion.
I'll make the motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement with Sanford Health Plan. Roll call vote. Excuse me. Commissioner Kelly?
Just a comment. Now, you know, we had an overall increase of 5%. We're seeing this with almost all our contracts on our outside vendors is 4% to 6%, 7%. I don't know how we're going to do it when we only get a 2% increase in revenues every year, but--
2% at maximum most type years.
1.4% this year, I think.
Well, plus growth, but yeah, it's--
It's dismal.
Kind of a mission impossible.
Yeah. Roll call vote.
Kelly?
Yes.
Peckus?
Yes.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hieburger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
There are no application for abatement today. The next item is notice and request. A notice from Abate of Sioux Falls of intent to conduct a fundraising raffle between January 1st, 2015, and March 22nd, 2015, has been received and is placed on file in the auditor's office. There are no planning and zoning notices today. The next items are petition for compromise of lien. John Peckus?
Thank you, Cindy. This is on DPNO number 20881, in the amount of $1,549.43, and it's interesting because that actually differs from the amount on the memorandum. That's $1,984.43, which is a correct amount. I just caught that.
Commissioner, the higher amount is a late add that was just recorded and was not on there when I wrote the briefing memo.
Well, that's okay, because you know, when we put these, when we post the agendas days ahead pursuant to state law, we have these get added on at the last minute, so that's okay. It happens. Anyway, with this compromise of lien, the request is actually coming from the applicant who is trying to remove her ex-husband from the lien account. She is planning to sell her home. She requests a compromise of the lien with no payment. The lien has incurred between November of 1980-- I think we still had the hostages at that point in time in Iran-- and November of 2014, so just this last month. The applicant states that she and her ex were married in March of 1988 with the separation in October of 1991, and of course, there was a divorce finalized in 1992 in February. In lieu of the divorce decree, the ex-husband verified the dates of the marriage and the divorce. The lien includes county aid services from Human Services and of course, public defender bills, which also belong to the ex-husband. So essentially, what she's requesting is that the lien be removed from both the applicant and she would be allowed to go ahead and have the lien removed from the property to allow her to go ahead with the closing. So the goal here is to allow the lien to continue against her ex-husband, but to have it removed against both the real property and herself personally. And then, Robert just informed me right before the meeting that apparently, these were incurred before the marriage and after the marriage, so it wasn't during the penancy of the marriage. So I'll make the motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peckus?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hieburger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next lien is on DPNO number 85303 in the amount of $1,691.60. Once again, the commission office received a request to compromise this lien. The applicant requests the compromise of lien with no payment. The lien was incurred between June and September of 2014, and all the charges relate to what we remember as an involuntary commitment hold, where the applicant initiated it against his brother. This is one of those rare circumstances where if you actually request involuntary alcohol commitment, the lien is actually incurred not against the person that actually receives the benefits, it's the party that makes the application for the lien. So it's one of those rare circumstances where if you're in fear of a family member basically having alcohol poisoning and you actually invoke an emergency alcohol commitment, you will be responsible for the bill, not the person who receives the treatment. It's unique under South Dakota law. So with that being said, we know that this person intervened to try to help his brother. They were not in any immediate need to resolve the lien, however, you know, they were notified that they could make whatever payments that they could possibly make. This is one of those unique circumstances where, quite honestly, we would expect those payments to be made, but this commission has taken somewhat of a sympathetic viewpoint for family members that have invoked this statute. The applicant works part-time as a security guard. He lost his full-time employment position in 2013. He also takes care of his elderly parents, and they receive a very limited fixed income. The applicant states that his brother's challenges has forced his family to find other housing. He indicates he was not aware they would be responsible for the expenses associated with the IVC hold due to his financial circumstances, and of course, he doesn't have the ability to pay the lien balance. The lien-- the applicant does have assets of approximately $25,000, including two vehicles, cash, household goods, liabilities of just over $13,000, which includes a credit union bill and credit card debt. And anyway, at this point, he did not have his 2013 income tax return when he completed his application. He said it's still packed away in a box and he wasn't able to locate it. So even with that information, I'll make the motion. I don't know if I'll get the second.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Benega?
You know, we've had situations like this before, and in this particular case, if my daughter was to have me involuntarily taken, my daughter would get the bill. But if Commissioner Peckus had me taken, it would be free to him. But both of you are wrong. It's--
[laughing]
But you know, we had a case a while back where we had an octogenarian who had sent her grandson in for care, and at age 82 or 84, she wrote us a letter and said-- and she had made like 36 payments of $25 each--
Right.
And she wrote a letter and she said, you know, "I broke my leg and lost my job. Would you forgive the rest of this?" Well, you know, the alternative is to have your son, your grandson, your father, whatever, you know, beat the crap out of you or something, and you know, in this case here, this fellow took his brother, who, you know, assuming he had a serious problem, could easily have been, you know, a big, big problem. And you know, I have to say, I have great sympathy for families that try to help a family member as opposed to letting them run amok.
Kirsten?
Just a brief clarification for the record, just so we're all understanding. I don't think this will change the discussion at all, but just for the public's benefit, the statute actually imposes this obligation on the person submitting the petition as to the attorney's fees for getting that--
Right.
--hold on there. It's not for the cost of the treatment of the patient if they're ultimately held. I just want to make that distinction. I don't think it matters for the purpose of our discussion, but just so the public is aware that that's what that's limited to.
Commissioner Kelly?
Kirsten, you did some research on this issue. Can you explain what the circumstances were?
Well, there was another incident. I'm not sure it's related, though. I know there's a--
It's not related to the--
The actual involuntary commitment, no.
Okay. Then--
Commissioner Peckus?
Well, I was just going to comment. I'm really glad that Kirsten made that comment because it was kind of a segue into a conversation I had last week. I went out to lunch with another circuit judge and we actually discussed some of the IVC bills, and he indicated that he had noticed that there was a large discrepancy in the billing rates depending on which attorneys were doing the work. Some attorneys charge, you know, for example, $1,500, others would be $200 or $300. So he was very mindful of that, and so we were actually discussing that particular situation. But yeah, thank you. And it does relate to the attorney fees involved, because a lot of times, there's a due process element related to involuntary commitment where the person's entitled to contest that commitment, because you're forcing them essentially to unfortunately do something they don't want to do, and they do have a due process right, so anyway.
And I don't think-- the point was made that this gentleman did make payments on this bill--
Correct.
--in the past. He's made some payments, so. I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth?
I just would also comment that, you know, potentially, it could be sort of a revenge thing, and so there does need to be a process to make sure that your family member isn't just, you know, causing trouble as a payback for some other issue.
Right.
Not everyone that gets submitted for this winds up going to treatment or anything.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, in this case, then, do I understand there was about $1,800 in attorney fees, a quarter point in attorney fees on this that are--
Yes.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peckus?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hieburger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is the time when anyone can come to the podium, state your name and your issue that is not on the agenda, so anyone that would like to address the commission at this time. Okay, seeing none, move on.
Regular business. Item 10 is a public hearing to consider zoning text amendment number 14-04 to allow the keeping of fowl in the RR Rural Residential District, Article 4.00 of the 1990 Revised Zoning Ordinance for Minnehaha County. David Heinold.
Good morning, commissioners. David Heinold is-- I'm going to get the PowerPoint loaded up here in a second. The proposed amendment was requested by Anthony Dreyer to allow the keeping of fowl in the rural residential district. The proposed amendment specifically would allow up to six fowl, provided-- a maximum of six fowl with no roosters, maybe a cap, provided that-- as permitted special needs, provided that the following conditions have been met. Domestic non-commercial use of poultry or fowl. Two, poultry or fowl must be kept in a secure coop, pen, or enclosure from dusk until dawn. Any pen, run, cage, hut, enclosure, or coop serving to house or confined fowl shall maintain a distance of 10 feet from the property line and 30 feet from any adjacent residence. It also adds a definition into the accessory buildings and uses for-- to allow a pen, run, cage, hut, enclosure, coop serving to house or confined fowl. And in addition to that, it would also add a definition, which is similar to the approved definition for the 2002 Revised Joint Zoning Ordinance, which, as you can see, they're right on the screen. I won't go through the exact definition. Notification of the December 9th, 2014 public hearing was published on November 17th, 19th, and 20th in the August leader Del Rapids Tribune and Hartford Area News respectively. The Planning Commission voted unanimously five to zero to recommend approval of zoning text amendment 14-04. Copy of the ordinance and minutes from the October 27th Planning Commission meeting are included for your view. Board of County Commissioners may vote to approve, deny, or amend zoning text amendment 14-04. The applicant did call me late last week that they were unable to make it to the meeting, but I don't know if their representative was here. They were going to try and send them. So if you have any questions, thank you.
Any questions for David? Commissioner Kelly?
David, could you read that definition on 2602?
2602? It would add-- 282 would be the number, the definition in there.
Okay.
Fowl, birds of the order, galiformis, gallas, the order, gallinaceous, and the order ansariforms.
[laughing] He's picking--
I couldn't pronounce it, but I was just wondering if you could.
It's nice to know you can say them. Any other questions for David?
Just to be clear, that doesn't include pheasants, right? So we don't have to worry about any pheasant farms calling us up saying you just put me out of business?
I believe I went through a list, and it doesn't include pheasants in there.
Just want to be clear.
Don't have the list in my folder right now.
Any other questions for David? This is a public hearing. Are there any proponents that would like to speak? Seeing none. Are there any opponents that would like to speak? There are none. Back to the commission. What is your pleasure? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt this zoning text amendment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, I have a motion and a second to consider a zoning text amendment allowing the keeping of fowl in rural resident districts. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
With a roll call vote. Kelly?
Aye.
Peckus?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hieburger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 11 is consider a resolution approving the operation of a regulated medical waste transportation facility by Stericycle Incorporated to be located at 47172 Dominic Street, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Property is legally described as Lot 4, Block 2, Green Valley Edition, the northeast quarter, Township 12, 102-50. Kevin Hookman.
Good morning, commissioners. Kevin Hookman, Planner 1. This is a request to consider a resolution for a medical waste facility, transfer facility, and this is to be located at 47172 Dominic Street, and this is in the northwest corner of the Trips Runner exit in the industrial park there, and it's highlighted here on the map. This medical waste facility was presented in front of the Planning Commission on October 27th and approved with no opposition. It was approved with conditions such as requiring a fence and requiring it to be locked up for safety purposes. The property itself is bare along with much of the land around it, but the land is filling in quickly. As you can see here, it's on paved streets, and the site is proposed to be temporary storage location where they use route trucks to pick up the medical waste at the generator such as Avera or Sanford, and then bring it here and transfer it from the route trucks into a semi-trailer, and it stays there for a couple of days until the trailer is full, and then they transfer it out and dispose of it at an incinerator or another disposal facility elsewhere. So the trailers typically move once they're full within two days, according to the applicant. The site will also include a small structure, a small like office-type building for paperwork and upkeep of the property. Let's see. I do have a resolution prepared. If you would like me to read it for you, or--
I think so. I think we've all read it.
Well, this is-- yeah. And if you have any questions for me, I can take--
Are there any questions for Kevin?
So are they going to be using an incinerator at this site, or are they going to be using a larger radiation device?
Neither. It's just going to be storage, temporary storage to be moved off the site. There is a radiation site--
Right.
--very nearby.
Yeah. That's why I was wondering if it was related to that site or if it was--
No, this would be a nation-- national-wide company, Stericycle, so they have locations across the country.
Any other questions for Kevin? Look for a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the operation of a regulated medical waste transportation facility.
Madam Chair, I just have a question if there's anyone that wants in the audience here for that issue.
It's not a public hearing.
Okay, good.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peckus?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hieburger?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 12 is consider a supplement to-- a motion to supplement $33,836.87 from the highway fund to the highway budget, ASN 17251, representing reimbursement from the FEMA for the Category A debris removal and Category B emergency protective measures. DJ Boothey.
Good morning, commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This reimbursement was received last month in November for work related to the June flooding that we had received and had put quite a bit of effort towards taking care of in the months after that, and we would like to use this check to reimburse our highway fund budget for this year so we can continue on with some of the expenses that we're incurring. So if you have any questions, it's real similar to the previous reimbursements that we've received and more that we'll receive even into 2015.
Okay. Any questions for DJ? Is there a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second to-- this motion and a second to supplement the highway fund from FEMA reimbursements. Roll call vote.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peckus?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hieburger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign construction change order number two for a decrease of $1,544.47 to the contract with Dakota Contract Incorporated for minor additions and subtractions of various field-masured quantities on Project MC 50-1215-010. DJ Boothey.
This structure was one of the ones that we completed this year as part of our seven bridges that we reconstructed. This is the one that is on the northeast corner of Del Rapids, and this change order is just finalizing out the final quantities for the project so we can complete the final pay application. It includes five working days of liquidated damages at $500 apiece, so the contract was So the contract was deducted $2,500 solely for liquidated damages for late completion. So total deduct is 154447 and brings the total contract amount to $395,577.26.
Any questions for D.J.? Look for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for a change order and a decrease to a contract on highway. Roll call vote. Kelly?
Aye.
Pecos?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger? Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 14 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Infrastructure Design Group for Preliminary Engineering Services for the replacement of MC Bridge Structure Number 50-243-100 located on County Road 122. D.J. Boothey.
This structure, Commissioners, is just south of Aeros Road or just around the corner from the 121 Bridges, the four that we replaced the last two years. And it is on a county highway. It is posted for a load. And if you recall, this is the bridge that we did a jackdine project on a couple of years ago to open up the bridge after it was closed. So we've had this bridge on our radar system for a while now. We would like to start moving forward. It is budgeted for a 2015 construction and all the expenses related to this contract will occur in 2015. This contract is for the preliminary engineering, which includes the type, size, and location study, after which we'll move into a final design agreement.
Any questions for D.J.? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second for the engineering services for replacement of a structure. Any other comments or questions? Roll call vote. Kelly?
Aye.
Pecos?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hyburger? Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 15, Consider a Motion to Authorize the Use of Savings in the Personnel Budget for the Following Departments: Highway, Information Technologies, Jail, Southeast Tech Security, 24/7 Sobriety, Public Defender, and Facilities Construction. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson with the Commission Office. As you are aware, county policy states that if any of the departments wish to use savings from their personnel budget to cover other areas of the budget, that is a specific request and authorization that needs to be brought to the Commission and approved by the Commission. We have a number of those requests that have come to the Commission Office. All of the departments that have made those requests are here and prepared to give a briefing or a summary of that if you would like to hear from those departments.
Are there any questions for Robert or different department heads? I just had one. Lloyd, I was just gonna, on facilities, and I see yours isn't probably going to cover all your expenses. Were they building expenses or were they energy?
Primarily utilities.
Yes, I figure.
Approximately $130,000 in natural gas and about $40,000 in electrical.
Okay.
Both due to increase in the natural gas in the latter part of January and February in the colder-than-average temps.
Right, right. Thank you, Lloyd. Are there any other questions for any? And look for a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion?
Oh, Ken has a.
The motion, I think, for the record, does need to include specifically those department titles.
Okay.
That you're doing.
Okay.
Okay, I will make a motion to authorize the use of savings in the personnel budget for Highway, Information Technology, Jail, Southeast Tech Security, 24/7 Sobriety, Public Defender, and Facilities and Construction.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second for personnel savings to those particular departments. Commissioner Barth?
John, hand his hand up first.
Oh, excuse me.
Well, some people might be wondering, why do we authorize this when there seems to be a question, if there's money in the budget, why do we do this? And I can tell you why. We went through, years and years ago, we went through a budget process where we were looking at, quite honestly, once again, the county not having enough money. And we went through numerous, numerous budget hearings. And at the end of that budget cycle, we passed a budget that was extremely austere. And then we discovered that one of the budgets, the State's Attorney budget, had enough money to go ahead and to do construction within their own department budget by taking money out of personnel that wasn't used. And so at that point in time, the Commission decided that we needed to clamp down on the ability to move money out of personnel budgets, primarily because we did not feel that there was any sort of basis through our budget hearings to allow for that type of behavior. So anyway, we changed our control. Yeah. Ken, you have a comment?
And let's not forget, though, that one of the primary reasons that departments are doing this, you know, these are authorized dollars within the 2014 budget that this Commission has approved, but because of this policy, you can't use it for operating or capital expenses without your approval. And one of the reasons they're asking that is if you allow these, the use of these dollars, then these departments should not be coming back at you at, for the end of this year and asking for additional funds to supplement shortfalls that they have in those budgets and that in the operating and the capital portions of their budget. So this is a way to pay all those expenses associated with those departments without the need to come in and do a specific supplement for additional general fund dollars.
And those monies are coming from personnel where, coming from personnel where they maybe had a vacant position for a month or two months or six months as they tried to fill them and that saves up in their personnel. So that's where that money comes from. All right, Commissioner Barth?
Yeah, I agree with you, Madam Chairperson, on those things, but we do look at our personnel budget pretty closely.
We do.
And, you know, I do note that we seem to have surpluses all over the place in personnel funds. And, you know, my thought is that we've always been very, used the pencil pretty tight on those things and maybe I'm not as tight as I thought.
I think we do use the pencil tight. I think it's more just because of natural attrition. People are moving on and you have vacancies all over and that just saves you dollars. Every week is another dollar. So. I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Pecos has read this whole motion to us, so I'm not going to repeat it again. Roll call vote. Kelly?
Aye.
Pecos?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hyburger? Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 16 is to authorize the chairman to sign the Zerker Technology Agreement for Public Safety Software to be installed at the Juvenile Detention Center. Monty Wattenbach.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Wattenbach with Minnehaha County IT Department. I'm here today for two different agenda items, agenda items 16 and 17. So although they're separate agenda items, the pricing for those two different solutions or that solution are dependent on each other. So you may choose to vote on those collectively. But the first one is for the Juvenile Detention Center. As you may have seen in the memo that I wrote, JDC currently uses a legacy-based AS400 solution. I think we've all kind of been in the agreement of trying to modernize those offices and those applications. And I think that purchasing a solution that has been proven in other locations is the best route for Juvenile Detention Center. There is a possibility we could develop software for them. It would be a pretty major undertaking. You know, we can look at that application, that office, and we know how big of a project that is. Is a big project. And I think in this situation, we're best off purchasing a solution. And intentionally I have left a vacancy in my programming area to help fund this project for the Juvenile Detention Center.
Are there any questions for Monty on Zerker? This is a program that's been used in Pennington County and JDC has been out and checked that out and I'm sure Monty has checked it out thoroughly and they seem to feel like this is a very good fit for what we needed over there. Any other questions? I would look for a motion on?
So moved.
What we have to do in a second?
I'll second. This is on item 15.
This is on item 16.
16, I'm sorry.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the chairman to sign the Zerker Technology Agreement for the Public Safety Software to be installed at the JDC Center. Roll call vote. Kelly?
Aye.
Pecos?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hyburger? Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
And item 17 is to authorize the chairman to sign the Zerker Technology Agreement for Public Safety Software to be installed at the Sheriff's Office.
Make a motion to authorize the chair to sign that?
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions for Monty regarding this? Roll call vote. Kelly?
Aye.
Pecos?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hyburger? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Monty.
Thank you.
Item 18 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2015 Coroner Medical Examiner Agreement between Minnehaha County, Dr. Kenneth Snell, Sanford Health Pathology Clinic, Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson again with the Commission Office. I have for your consideration here the 2015 contract between the county and Dr. Kenneth Snell and Sanford Pathology for the coroner and medical examiner services. If you'd like, I'll just go through the elements of the contract briefly and obviously be available for your questions. The first part of it deals with strictly the coroner functions that Dr. Snell, his deputies, and Sanford Pathology perform. And that will be paid or reimbursed at a rate of $6,000 per month. That is the same rate as the current 2014 agreement, just for the coroner services. In addition to that, the agreement also includes the medical examiner portion of this agreement where Dr. Snell through Sanford Pathology will be reimbursed $17,262.50 per month for services as the county's medical examiner. And that amount is up slightly from the current year. And in exchange for that flat rate, that provides autopsy services for a, regardless of the number of autopsies that are required. So it's a, it's a flat rate for the county regardless of the number of times it is utilized in terms of the number of autopsies that are performed. In addition to that amount, lab fees, ambulance transports, monthly cell phone and pager bills will be billed separately. And those amounts are just over $53,000, down slightly from the current amount of $59,025 in 2014. The overall coroner budget for the year, and this is reflective of the amount that you considered and approved as part of your budget process for the 2015 budget year, is And that is the same overall amount of the current year's contract.
Okay. Are there any questions for Commissioner Kelly?
Robert, as long as we're on the subject, they, what's going to happen with the ambulance transport?
That is, that is a question that, and a conversation that I had with, with Dr. Snell when he dropped off the signed contract. And I think that's one that I'm going to defer to Mr. McFarland. I think he has some thoughts that he wants to share with you on that.
Prior to, excuse me, prior to having my surgery, I did meet with the provider that the city has selected to start the new contract period. And I did discuss with them, you know, some of the intent and some of the processes associated with the dispatch area number five and their willingness to continue that arrangement. And I also discussed the seed and transport contract with them and I've given them copies of both of those things. And at this juncture and that, we've agreed to have some ongoing discussions, but I don't think that that's going to be a major issue that we'll need to resolve.
Are we hoping they'll just assume the contract?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Make the motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second to sign the contract with, for 2015 with the coroner and medical examiner. A roll call vote, please. Kelly?
Aye.
Pecos?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hyburger? Yeah, aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 19 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2015 contract for animal control services between Minnehaha County and the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society. Robert Wilson.
This is another one of the next year, 2015 contracts we have for your consideration. This one is for animal control services with the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society. The overall amount of the contract, $47,000, is the same amount as the current 2014 agreement. The bulk of that amount, $36,036, is paid in 12 equal monthly installments. The additional amount is available for after-hours calls that are billed at $56 an hour plus mileage rates. And again, this is the same overall amount as your current contract for animal control services.
Okay. Any questions for Robert? These monies were allocated during the 2015 budget. And so all we're doing at this time is approving the contracts that we'd already set the side of the money for. So is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments?
Just have a question. How's it working as far as we know with the contract with them? Pretty well?
Going, going very well. This is one of those contracts we've had in place for many years.
Yep.
And it's been a very beneficial contract to the, to the county.
I have a motion and a second. A roll call vote, please. Kelly?
Aye.
Pecos?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hyburger? Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 20 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2015 agreement between Minnehaha County and the City of Sioux Falls for detoxification services. Robert Wilson.
This is one of the examples of where we do partner very well with our fellow partners in local government, the City of Sioux Falls. For a number of years, many years, the city has contributed to the funding needed to operate our detox facility. The current amount, as you see in your briefing memo, is $157,500. And according to this, this agreement, that same amount would continue next year in 2015.
Are there any questions for Robert? Are there any comments? Seeing none, I would look for a motion.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the chairman to sign the 2015 agreement between Minnehaha County and the City of Sioux Falls for detox services. Roll call vote. Kelly?
Aye.
Pecos?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hyburger? Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 21 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2015 agreement between Minnehaha County and South Dakota Department of Veterans and Military Affairs for Joint Security Protection Agreement. Keith, when you?
Good morning. Requesting approval for the 2015 Joint Security Protection Agreement. Contract amount is expected to cover all operations costs of the contract. Is there any further questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Minnehaha? Commissioner Kelly?
The person, there's, is this going to reduce the personnel required? Is there going to be any?
Yeah, currently our, our numbers are reduced.
Any layoffs or anything?
So we're not laying anybody off. It's just we're sitting where we're at and we're just not looking to employ anyone else.
Okay. Any other questions? This is a decrease over the 2014 budget, a significant decrease. Any other questions? I would look for a motion.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Department of Veterans and Military Affairs. A roll call vote. Kelly?
Aye.
Pecos?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hyburger? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item 22 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2015 lease agreements between Minnehaha County and the Sioux Valley Genealogical Society and the Minnehaha County Historical Society for Office Space and the Old Courthouse Museum. Bill Hoskins.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of Sioux Land Heritage Museums. These are lease agreements, an annual lease agreement between the Sioux Valley Genealogical Society and the Minnehaha County Historical Society. Both organizations operate or occupy space in the Old Courthouse Museum. They have done so for at least 35 years. We've been, you know, formal lease agreements since about 2001. This is a free lease of space and does require a unanimous vote of the Commission to approve these leases and authorize the chairman to sign.
Are there any questions for Bill? Look for a motion?
I'd make a motion and I have a comment.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second with a comment. Commissioner Barth?
Well, in effect, these volunteers working on their special interests also help the public when they're in the museum and also with their genealogical requests and historical requests. So they're volunteers doing what we might hire people to do otherwise.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? Look for a roll call vote. Kelly?
Aye.
Pecos?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hyburger? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Bill.
The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports today? Commissioner Barth?
Yesterday, we, the Intergovernmental Board met. That consists of Commissioner Pecos, myself, the mayor of Sioux Falls, and Kenny Anderson, who, Kenny Anderson couldn't make it yesterday. But, you know, the Multicultural Center is under some financial stress right now because they had a grant which lasted for five years, paying $150,000 a year, and that ended this September and was not renewed. So they're, they're working to find ways to fulfill, fill the gap. And certainly we had some discussion about that and there's work to be done.
Any other questions or comments? Liaison reports. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, tomorrow I'll be going to PIR for the SDACC Board meeting. One of the items, when, at the convention, the increase in tax was kind of, there was a consensus, but there wasn't any specific proposal, so it's going to go to the board Wednesday, or Thursday, yeah, Wednesday. And I guess I'm just open to, I don't know whether we can change the whole parameters or if we can go to the split deal, as Cindy has advocated so much, or whether we have to stick with the tax deal. But either way, I guess I'm just, if any of you have any comments on where we should go with that, I'd like to take them with me as to what direction we're going to go. I'm not optimistic about any tax increases getting through, but we can certainly give it the best shot we got. On the other hand, trying to take money away from the state is not the easiest mission in the world either. So if you have any comments or now or after the meeting, I appreciate what action or what position Minnehaha County should be going in this.
Are there any comments? Commissioner Barth?
Just a question. Commissioner Kelly, has there been any proposed texts for, for that bill sent out to you? Have you seen any, any language?
I haven't seen, no, there hasn't been any communication and I apologize that I probably should have initiated some earlier. Time catches up with you so fast and, as you know, we've had some issues in our family for the last three months. So, but I guess we'll have a good discussion on. for the last three months, so, but I guess we'll have a good discussion on it and come up with something. The group as a whole at the convention wanted us to go forward with something, so it's just a matter of the board finding something that's acceptable to the board and acceptable hopefully to second.
Dick, if you do come across any language, feel free to zap it out to us, and I'll send you back my comments.
Okay.
Any other liaison reports? Okay, is there any new business? Is there any old business? Seeing none, we could, a motion to adjourn.
I do have a personnel item. I'm sure Jeff and I would like to brief you on. So I'll go ahead and make a motion for going into executive session for personnel.
We have, and contract.
Oh, okay, then, thank you. Then we do have a contract issue as well.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
To go into executive session for contract and personnel issues. A roll call vote.
Kelly?
Aye.
Pecos?